To the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible for liberty and justice for all.
We are deeply saddened to hear the passing of four grade Carrillo students Joel Lu and the lead groundkeeper gardener Chris Perry. Joel Lu, fourth grade student at Carrillo Elementary School, passed away peacefully at the end of June after battling the certain illness over the summer. Although Joel was new to Carrillo in 2024, he quickly made friends and shared his love of fishing and making crab traps. Joel also had a remarkable gift for art and for happiness when he were creating. He was talented, organized artist, making flower and animal out paper, and he loved sharing his sketchbook with friends. More than anything, Joel was all in, all the time. He fully embraced every dress up day, spirit week activity, and school event. He was a joyful presence who had the dream of one day becoming an art teacher himself. Though his time with Carrillo was short, Joel's creativity, enthusiasm, and kindness left a lasting mark at the Carrillo community. He is survived by his parents and his older brother Jeremy, and he will be greatly missed by all who knew him. Chris Perry, showing the district in 2016 as a groundkeeper gardener. His maintenance and operation family said that Chris poured his heart into everything he did, and so it was no surprise when he was promoted to lead groundkeeper and gardener in 2022. His fellow staff members recall him a truly bright light, always smiling, always joyful, and always ready to greet the day with a kind word and a positive spirit. His love for work were unmistakable, but it wasn't just the work. He cared about the people doing it, and he led his crew with patience, respect, and a deep sense of responsibility. Chris was a man of strong faith and was often seen with his Bible in hand or taking a quiet moment of reflection. He spoke often of his family with love and pride, and it was clear that being a father and a husband were the greatest joy of his life. He is survived by his wife Janet and his two sons and daughter. Chris leave behind a legacy of kindness, strength, integrity for our heart of which his family, his crew, and everyone who had the honor of knowing him. We stand our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Joel Lu and Chris Perry. A moment of silence now begins. Moment of silence now ended. Please be seated. You know, we're going to start our regular meeting today with a presentation of our new administrator. First, we're going to ask Assistant Superintendent Lisa Swart to lead the parade today.
First up, good evening, President Nguyen, members of the board, Dr. Moffey, and staff and community members. It is a great honor to introduce our new administrators to our elementary education team. Come on up, group. Just kind of wave when I say your name. We have them out there in order. First, we have our assistant principals. Kathy Bowie, most recently served as a TOSA in TK six instruction and is now the assistant principal at Bryant Elementary. Myra Garcia, she also served as a TOSA in TK six instruction and is now the assistant principal at Eisenhower Elementary. Jeff Leyland, coming from Student Services as a coordinator and is now the MS Assistance Principal at Gilbert and Warren Elementary Schools. And Erin Rivera, most recently served as a TOSA in TK six instruction and is now the assistant principal at Patton Elementary. And now our principals. Esther Atherton, former assistant principal from Eisenhower and will now be the principal at Skylark Preschool. Cavei Holamalia Gonzalez, previously assistant principal at Patton and is now serving as the principal at Parkview Elementary. And Lynn Thompson, former assistant principal at Bryant and is now serving as the principal at Hill Elementary. Thank you to all of you. We look forward to a wonderful year with all of you. Yay! Now I'd like to call up Dr. Stephanie Heflin, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Elementary.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, I'd like to call up our new secondary administrators. There's a few. Excellent. All right. It's my pleasure to present to you our newest additions to the secondary administrative team, along with administrators who have been appointed to positions at the next level. Let's start with our assistant principals. Dr. Pedro Espinoza, formerly TOSA and seven twelve instruction, will now be the assistant principal at Garden Grove High School. Dr. Kelly Moore, who last served as a TOSA in seven twelve instruction and was appointed last fall as assistant principal. She is the current assistant principal at Garden Grove High School as well. We have Ashlyn Shoup, who was formerly a TOSA in our seven twelve instruction office and is now assistant principal at Ralston Intermediate. We have Melanie Wong, who is joining GGUSD, formerly an assistant principal at West Covina High School, and she is now an assistant principal at Santiago High School. And now for our principals. We have Dr. Ally Bach, formerly assistant principal at Ralston Intermediate, will now be the principal at Lake Intermediate. Stephanie Bartlett, formerly the principal at Bell Intermediate, she's in the corner over there, will now be serving as the principal at Pacifica High School. We have Curtis Bruno, who is joining GGUSD this year from his past principalship at High Tech Middle School in Van Nuys, as well as a former administrator in Fresno Unified. He will be our new principal at Rancho Alameda High School. We have Denise Kirkman, formerly the principal at Lake Intermediate. She will be now serving as the principal of La Quinta High School. And coming as the assistant principal of Santiago High School, you may remember her as Marcy Penya. She is now Marcy Lu. She will now be the principal at Walton Intermediate. And now for our directors. We have Dr. Amy Avina, who was formerly the principal at La Quinta High School, will now be the director of Adult Education and Alternative Services at Lincoln Education. And we have Dr. Ulysses Garcia, who was formerly the coordinator at Irvine Unified as the college and career readiness coordinator, will be joined, well, has been with us now since January, but formally, we will introduce him to the board as our director of career and technical education. And that rounds out our newest secondary administrators to the team. Welcome. We look forward to working with you this year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Stephen Yun.
Thank you, Dr. Heflin. Good evening, Board President Nguyen, members of the board, Dr. Moffey, staff and community. At this time, I'd like to introduce our newest administrators to the third floor, which consists of both Student Services and Special Education. Team, if I can have you guys come up to the front, face our board. First, we have Dr. Luisa Salang, Program Supervisor. She was a special education coordinator with Santa Ana Unified School District. She will be supporting the Preschool Assessment Center. Next, we have Tanya Severs, Program Supervisor. She was the MM Ed Specialist over at Santiago High School. We also have Rebecca Wentz, Program Supervisor. She was the MS Ed Specialist over at Woodbury Elementary School. We also have Linda Torrick, Dr. Linda Torrick, Assistant Director of Special Education. She was the Special Education Coordinator over at Newport Mesa Unified School District. Last but not least, we have Marvin Atkins, Director of Student Services. He was the Student Services Director at Paris Union High School School District. They have joined our team, they've hit the ground running, and they're doing an amazing job, so thank you. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services, Jason Belacqua.
Good evening. I have an easy one here, so good evening, Board President Nguyen, Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Moffey, staff and community. Hopefully I have this, hopefully I don't need a script for this one. No, we're very pleased to introduce to you, oh yeah, as Steve, face the board, you're in trouble. I'm really excited to introduce Dr. Ivy Track as a director in personnel. We're excited to have her. Most recently, she was a principal at Alameda Intermediate, so welcome Ivy. All right, we're going to take photos. Who would you like up first? By group? Okay. All right. Elementary?
We're going to do the prom pose, so.
Secondary? You and Ivy.
We are going to have a short break for the new administrator. Welcome. It's very nice to see all of you, not better off if we see that many administrators in the room, but now you're free to leave if you want to. So we're going to have a short break for you to leave the room if you choose to do so. Don't worry, we don't take it personal. And we are now back in session, right? First is item the agenda, a comment from the public. Do you have any requests?
We do have one.
Thank you. First request is from Mr. Nicholas Dibbs, not Dip Nicholas, right? Okay. Nicholas Dibbs.
Members of the school board, Dr. Moffey, staff, community members, and guests. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm not only a science teacher, but also a CTE teacher, and so I want to bring up some things. First, you had a study session earlier today on board policies. I want to remind the board that in about, in May and June of 2023, I brought to the board's attention that there needs to be a policy on who, what is the criteria for a business or an individual to have a video hosted by the school district on a school's webpage or on the district webpage for over, approximately over two years. Real estate couple, the Tacney family, Jeff and Mrs. Tacney, have had a video on the Barker Elementary School homepage. They're not the only real estate agents in Garden Grove or in West Garden Grove yet for over two years, they've had a video hosted that's over 15 minutes hosted on the Barker Elementary School homepage at taxpayer expense. I asked you back in May and June to develop a policy as to who gets to have a video. Do they have to donate a certain amount of money? How long can the video be there? Who can qualify for video? I'd like to have a video, and I'm sure other people would too. So why not develop a policy? I was told by the board or by Dr. Moffey that it's up, in an email, that it's up to the principal to decide. When I asked the principal about it, she said it was up to the superintendent and up to the board, more or less, so I've been ping pong back and forth. So the problem is, is that the board has no clear policy about who gets to have a video hosted by the web, of a company, organization, or individuals. In my history, since graduating from Pacifica, I've never seen a company or individuals in business that get to have a video hosted by the school district on a school district website. So if you're going to, since you've allowed one business part, group to do this, one couple, you need to allow other people to also do this. You need to establish a clear policy delineating who and under what circumstances do people get to have a video hosted by any school. So that if you have to donate a certain amount of money, fine, but there's no policy. So it leaves the atmosphere or the culture of cronyism or the appearance of cronyism because you let one group have it, one couple have it, and other real estate agents or other people, other community members, don't get to have a video. So what is the policy? So please establish that. I've also asked that you have a policy on fair elections and fair investigations, fair and ethical elections, and fair enough, you have a copy of that, and also other things that need to be done. Unfortunately, I'm out of time. Thanks for listening.
Any other requests?
There are none.
Thank you. That conclude the public comment policy. Next is the approval of the minute from the last meeting on July 15. Any correction, change? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the approval of the minute.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Aye.
Four is on administration. We have four A and B.
I'll move four A through B.
Second.
Thank you. Item four A is to approve the recommendation for the staff to approve the memorandum of understanding which centrally our school district to provide services to individual with exceptional need requiring deaf and hard hearing program for the school year 2025 and 26. Item four B is to approve the independent contractor agreement, the master agreement for transportation of student with IEP in lieu of district or charter transportation according to Education Code 39806 for the school year 2025 and 26. Any question, comment? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Yes. Item five is on programs and instruction. We have only five A.
I'll move five A.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Item five A is to approve the consolidated submission of the consolidated application spring release 2025 for the categorical aid program in an estimated amount of $17,988,657 for the school year 2025 and 26. Any question, comment, five A? Hearing none, it's call for the vote.
Trustee Deana Nguyen? Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Aye.
Item six is on business. We have six A to K.
I'll move six A through K.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Item six A is to approve resolution number four with authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services to apply for lower emission school bus program administered by the South Coast Air Quality Management District to replace the 11 diesel powered school buses with the new electric buses for the school year 2025 and 26. Item six B to approve resolution number five with authorize the emergency repair work at Bryant Elementary School and authorize in the contract and to participate in attending her destiny to remediate and respond to the emergency termination, any emergency action at a condition so wanted. Item six C is to approve the completion of projects at various school site with bands of asphalt maintenance company and with ultrasound ordered ink with Mayor Construction, Inc. at a different school site. Item six D is to approve, authorize the use of the Palencia Jobalinda Unified School District bid number 22601 for the purchase of delivery of unleaded diesel fuel to purchase product from Mary Mack Energy Group and Pinnacle Petroleum, Inc. for the period from July 23, 2025 to July 22, 2028. Item six E to approve the ratification of various contract with the district under the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act to Avidek Industry LOC, CSI Electrical Contractor, Inc., Franklin Mechanical System, Inc., JL Carp, Inc., McWill Sport Services, Inc., and MIT Engineering and Construction, Inc. Item six F is to approve the renewal of the agreement with General Auction Company for the school year 2025 to 26 fiscal year to delegate authority to director of the business services to transfer and release district obsolete surplus equipment and property for sale and disposal. Item six G to approve the renewal of agreement with Tycoon Material, Inc. doing business at Happy Recycler for the school year 2025, 26 to transfer and release the district obsolete surplus equipment and property for sale and disposal of e-waste. Item six H is to approve the request to accept the bid for milk, dairy product, food juices, and ice cream from Hollandia Dairy as a low qualifying bid meeting, meeting the specification, terms, and conditions of request for proposal number 2414. The contract is valid from August 6, 2025 to August 5, 2026. Item six I is to approve the change in the food services for the amount 50 cent, but it's only apply to adult lungs for the school year 25, 26. Item six J is to approve the disposal of obsolete and surplus equipment and supply and e-waste specified in the list available at the office of business services. Item six K is to approve the purchase order and check for a total amount of $53,923,109.36. Is that all? All right, that's all. Any common question on any of the item? I have a question, a comment on item six A with the resolution number four with authorize to actually apply to trade in our old diesel powered school bus with a brand new electric buses for the school year 2025. It sound like trading the old beaten car with the brand new Tesla.
Yes, it's a great deal, yes.
That's a good deal. So, and then it's good that, and I noticed that our district have been doing a lot of this, and then we have been replacing many of our bus, it may look like all of them now, we now into the very clean environment thing, we got new, better buses. I know that our bus now have air conditioning too, seatbelt too, it have a lot of fancy stuff in there, and then we don't pay for a lot, but those bus cost a lot of money.
We've been very fortunate.
Yeah, that's very nice. Thank you for our district staff for looking out for this, and it's very nice that we can do that, but with almost no cost, except to buy electricity, not gasoline, right? Thank you very much. Any comment, question? All right, let's call for the vote.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Aye.
Item seven is on personnel, seven A to approve the certificate personnel report, and seven B is to approve the classified personnel report.
I move we approve items seven A and B.
I'll second it.
Aye. Move and second, so, yeah, I'm sorry, seven A is to approve the personnel report, and seven B is to approve the classified report. Have note seven C, okay? So moving that, then we're now ready for the vote.
Trustee Deana Nguyen?
Thank you, yes.
Trustee Walter Munyton?
Aye.
Trustee Terry Rocco?
Aye.
Trustee Bob Harden?
Aye.
Chairperson Len Nguyen?
Yes.
Now, last item on the agenda with a comment by a board member. We don't have the student member today, but we're going to but we're going to begin with trustee Dina Nguyen.
Yes, I want to thank staff for a good job in selecting our new administrators. I want to welcome the ones that are not with GGUSD and welcome them to the GGUSD family and congratulate the ones that are here already. And I wish them all the best in their new positions.
Trustee Muneton?
Yes, thank you, President Nguyen. First, I'd like to express my condolences to our moment of silence for this evening. Obviously, very disheartening and quite frankly catching us off guard, right? But definitely condolences to the family. I know our superintendent has been keeping us informed and has been meeting with the family regularly. So, we appreciate that and, yeah, hoping that, you know, everybody's the way that they process it hopefully is well and in a healing moment. So, definitely hard to fathom, especially beginning of the new school year. This summer has definitely been busy, busier summers for me at least in from other years. Usually summer for me, as much as all other school employees, is a time to relax and have fun and use that time to recharge. But as a board trustee, you know, we're kind of working on the clock, basically. There's always times where things that come up and basically right now our community is in a time of need. Things have slowly gotten better due to some issues with the courts and determining whether or not the ongoing raids that are happening in the community are permissible or not. A lot of back and forth. Nonetheless, our community is concerned. They're scared and with school right around the corner, there's a lot of uncertainty. With the uncertainty, there's a lot of additional workload for our staff that we need to take on. And I know that with Dr. Mafi's leadership, that is actively happening and is going to continue to happen. We've had a conversation many times around this topic. And one thing that I will say that I value about our district employees is that when they signed up to work in Garden Grove Unified, they knew that this district is and always has been a very diverse school district, right? Regardless of what people's political opinions may be, the number one thing that we all need to remember is that we service our students no matter where they come from, what languages they speak, et cetera. And in case, you know, there may be a stray one or two, maybe there needs to be a reevaluation of whether or not they want to continue serving our community and our district because our students are going to come with a suitcase full of trauma, whether directly or indirectly. And we all need to be able to figure out how to work around that. And when I go back to work at my district, I'm going to have to figure out how to work around that too. So, just, you know, wanting to put that out there that although summer is typically a time for beaches and going to the parks and stuff like that, not all of our families were able to experience that. We need to remind our staff that maybe December wasn't the greatest time and kind of be put in a place and meet them where they are at. As social workers, we always do that. We meet the client, we meet the student, we meet people where they are at or we assume that they are at. So, just want to put that out there just in preparation for the new school year. This summer, I've been doing a lot of community outreach, more so this year than many other years. For example, a couple of organizations gathered a couple of weeks ago and we started doing business outreach in the local community specifically targeting Little Saigon. And we were going literally door-to-door in different businesses and talking about how they can protect themselves and their employees from various things that are happening in the community. And we received a very positive response when talking to these business owners. They wanted information, they wanted signage, they wanted help and they wanted support from OCRN and different organizations that we've worked with and continue to work with. So, the community is out there, they're talking with each other. They're wanting to get more information. They're wanting to be knowledgeable. And it definitely reminded myself that I'm in a position where and even though I may not be ready for this at times that people look up to me for answers. And I may not always have the answers, but I'm going to try to direct them to a place where they can, whether it's our district administrators, whether it's the city, whether it's the county, whether it's a church or a synagogue or someplace of worship because sometimes even government entities don't have always the answers for everything. So, there needs to be a divine place where people can find refuge and safe haven. So, yeah, that's kind of what I've been up to this summer. I also had a really great time talking to our classified staff that do our food summer service program. So, that was really neat for me to go to the Chapman Library and be able to pass some food out to our community members. That day, we passed out pizza. And for those that know me, know me well, that I very much enjoy pizza. So, it was a little hard to, you know, not try to take a bite or two of the slices. But it was fun, nonetheless, it was very cool. And the great thing about the partnership with our district and the Orange County Public Libraries is a lot of times they will have various events in conjunction with our food delivery. So, for example, that day, they had storytimes, they had different activities. They even had folks that came up in like a bluie costume or outfit. And it was really neat to be able to get their food, but also get those students were able to enjoy some entertainment as well. I want to give a big kudo and a big shout out to Santiago High School during this summer. They have been like a pillar for the community through and through, and not just for the Santiago community, but for Garden Grove Unified as a whole to take the initiative to be able to try to provide a service for the community in these times, specifically the athletic program, specifically Coach Carlos Cruz and his team, some parents, some students that really took the initiative to want to do food and hygiene drives, which then kind of developed other communities to want to do something similar. You know, once they did it, then other communities, not even in Garden Grove Unified, they also wanted to take part of this. So, I was fortunate enough to kind of join heads with some of the folks in the community that wanted to do these drives. Also, kudos to the Monorca Initiative, which is a student and mom duo at Garden Grove High School that started off doing a drive, which is literally two people and a truck and an idea wanting to help the community, which has then spread, has been spreading to service more individuals. When specifically, I was able to partner with them as well as Yessenya to do a drive. And I just kind of wanted to take some folks that really helped us during that time because, you know, when you do these events, you really hope to try to get a good turnout and try to help as many people as you possibly can with the limited resources you can. But a lot of people came through and really supported us. So, I want to first thank Terry and Lynn for showing up and being there. Terry providing support and being there from beginning to end and calling up parents and asking how we could support them. Lynn for coming out and supporting and talking to our parents and our community leaders, helping us purchase some boxes from U-Haul to be able to provide to our community. I also want to take, thank Steven Yun for supporting me as well and getting some donations. So, I want to thank Lorena, Jason, Tony, Lisa as well for helping us out in that effort. We also had the Garden Grove Police Association. Want to thank President Stroud. We had Los Sanchez Mexican Restaurant Flappy's Wings. So, you hear a difference, you hear a multi-community effort, right? You got small businesses, large businesses, associations, folks that wanted to support. So, you know, definitely.
Lots of students.
Yeah, and lots of students, a lot of students that came out. And it's not just this one, it was the other ones that happened too. So, it was just really great to see. I remember it was around maybe twelve o'clock or so, me, Terry, and Lynn were looking at all the donations and wondering, how are we going to get rid of all this? Because from the first part, it was all drop-off. So, you had truckloads of people dropping off stuff and you couldn't even see Garden Grove High School anymore because we had mountains of donations. And we were wondering, how are we going to get rid? You know, we were saying like, what are we going to do with all this? But we sold out, we sold out. We actually had unfortunately, you know, turned some people away and made and let them know to go to the OC Food Bank, et cetera. But it was just amazing to see all that. It was, it was, it was, it was a very beautiful sight. And Lynn, thank you for, you know, bringing it up as well as at the prior meeting, which I was unable to attend. So, really beautiful to see. I know that we're going to be doing something here as well Saturday. So, I'm really happy to see that that we're continuing to be able to provide support for our families. One really nice event that I attended a couple of days ago was over at Sabroso Mexican Grill. I just kind of want to give them a shout out. They're a local Mexican eatery that's right here off of Harbor and Garden Grove Boulevard. They just reopened a brand-new location. And I was able to go to their grand reopening. And the reason why I bring this up is because there was a lot of people that I recognized that was there, a lot of our district employees and administrators that were there. That family is very well-known to Garden Grove Unified as well. Me and Dr. Mafi frequently go there as well. We have our meetings. So, it was really beautiful to see, you know, to kind of forget about all the stuff that's going on in the community for a moment and just get to dine with community members and friends. So, that was very neat. And, yeah, pretty much all I have this evening. I want to wish everybody a good first day of school, all of our administrators here, good first day of school. I know you all don't personally go to school, but you're helping all of this happen. So, you know, you're doing, you're doing, you're doing God's work, you're doing a really great job. Go out there and continue providing the best service that you can to our students because they're our customers and they look to us in times like this. So, yeah, I hope it's a good one. I know I'll be personally driving and going through traffic and the whole thing as a parent. So, you know, we'll all get through it. It'll be a great one, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rocco?
Yes, I'd like to extend my congratulations to our new and our newly assigned administrators and wish them well as they begin this new school year. And as we prepare for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I know that our administrators, teachers, and classified staff are committed to creating a safe, welcoming, warm, and inclusive environment for our students and their families because that's the culture of GGUSD. Their dedication and hard work play an important role in the school and the community. And my hope is for our employees to have a fantastic start to the new school year and for them to know how much they are appreciated. My hope for all students is to thrive, to be engaged in learning, to experience academic success, and to have a strong sense of belonging. My hope for their families is to feel safe and supported and to know that we value their partnership. So, I'm looking forward to the kickoff tomorrow, the keynote, as we begin a new school year. And I wish everybody lots of luck and good things happening. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Harden?
Oh, just a, just a couple of things. Again, welcome to the new administrators. And Dr. Heflin, somebody should warn Denise Kirkman that she has a board member living across the street who likes to show up for athletic events. The APs know, but you give her a heads up. And I had an opportunity to do something I haven't done in a very long time, which is attend a teacher training session today. And the thing that was notable about that is he was the trainer. And he did a great job talking to a roomful of teachers about some of the distinctives of Vietnamese culture and communicating with students and especially with their families. So, I thought you did an excellent job with that, Mr. Nguyen.
Aye, thank you very much.
You got me so excited.
Yeah, okay. So, so a couple of things coming up. And we obviously have the keynote, which is the kind of the kickoff for the school year for us tomorrow. And then Thursday, we're going to cut a ribbon on the CTE program that has been a long time coming. And we're really excited about the fact that we'll have a ribbon cutting on Thursday afternoon at Rancho and then next Monday, we'll have students in that program. So, I'm pretty excited about that. Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I want to again express my condolences to the family of Chris Perry. I know in our history of sixty years, we never had employees pass away in the life of duty. We never expect that to happen, but it did happen. I want to commend our staff, the superintendent, and all, the leadership team has done everything you can to support the family and to the affected community. It just, we never experienced this before, but you guys jump through the task and provide the support. That's all we can do now. And then let's see where we go from here. We, that, we, we will alleviate where we go. This is the first time it's been for our district. And also joining with our colleagues, I want to also announce the community aid drive. Again, we continue, I don't know, began with you, Walter, but this we have been having a lot of successful community drive. This week, we have hosted by our own district. It will be on Saturday, August night, from ten AM to two PM. It's right in front of our district office here. So, I want to show up, I hope the video can show that. And then we pass out this information to parents where and hopefully everyone can join in. The significant of this is not only the amount of food and merchandise we send out, even though it's a mountain thing out there. And I was scared because I don't know what to do if you don't distribute it enough. But the amount of support, the way our community come together to do this, a time of need, it mean a lot to our affected community. We showed that every one of us care and support and that mean a lot to our community in general as well. And it's also important as we begin our new school year. It's less than one week now, August 11th, that the D-Day of our school start. But our staff have been working, getting in high gear to that already. Harden mentioned keynote speak tomorrow by our superintendent and many of our assistant superintendent. That is a showcase of our community. It will begin the new year tomorrow at nine AM, right? At the, it's at nine AM, okay? It's at the Don West Auditorium. That is the, it will be a show-out event tomorrow. And you're right, Mr. Harden. We staff have begun our super week already for training. It was kind of our honor to be able to do the presenting at the professional development. Normally, it's not done by a board member because it's done by professionals only. So, so I just want to try out. And as we begin our new school year, I wish, I want to welcome our new administrator and newly assigned administrator. They're getting on for the new exciting school year. So, we, as we begin our new school year now, I wish, to wish everyone the best of success. We go, for sure, we're going to have another exciting year this year. But as we all know, there are many challenges ahead of us. There are difficult time, not only in the school environment but in society as well. So, we're going to look out for one another, look out to help, do the best we can to our students and to our family. And with that, I want to announce the next meeting. The one after today will be September 2nd. Also begin with, at five PM on the third session. And the one after that will be October 7th. Also begin at seven PM. So, thank you. With that, the meeting is now adjourned.